Good evening. I'm going to call to order tonight the meeting for the Pecosin Planning Commission, Monday, September 16th, 2013. And at this time, I will ask you to join me, if you will, in the, I'm going to do the Lord's Prayer, which everybody knows. And if you'll be kind enough to stand, and we'll say that together. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, and thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us of our trespasses, and we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. Now, if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll move on to the first item on our agenda, which is the approval of the minutes for the regular session, which was held on July 15th, 2013. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes as they stand?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Travis?
Aye.
Mr. Gardi?
Yes.
Mr. Avery?
Aye.
Mr. Clifton?
Abstained.
Mr. Titlow?
Aye.
Mr. Gordon?
Aye.
And Chairwoman Schreiber?
Aye.
Madam Chairwoman, the motion carried by vote of six to zero with one abstention.
All right, thank you. And also, we have the minutes for the work session, which was held on August 19th, 2013. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as those are written?
Make a motion.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you, certainly. Mr. Gordon?
Aye.
Mr. Titlow?
Aye.
Mr. Clifton?
Aye.
Mr. Avery?
Aye.
Mr. Gardi?
Yes.
Mr. Travis?
Aye.
And Chairwoman Schreiber?
Aye.
Madam Chairwoman, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero. Thank you. All right, we, at this time, we'll have audience for visitors. And at this, at this particular part of the meeting, if you have something which you would like to address the Planning Commission members on besides the items that are for public hearing, this is other than public hearing items. If you have a, a subject matter that you'd like to come forward and address, please do it this time in the audience for visitors. And if you do come to the podium, give us your name and address. All right, if at this time, no one wishes to come forward and speak, we'll go ahead and close the audience for visitors, and we will move on to the public hearings on our agenda. We have five tonight. And what we're going to do, I believe Debbie is going to give us a, on the first, let's see, the first three, Debbie, you're going to give one presentation, is that correct?
Hmm.
Okay, but we will take each item, public hearing item separately, and open the public hearing on each one, and allow you to speak on that if you have something.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, and members of the Planning Commission. Staff is prepared to present to you this evening, the final version, or the last version, I should say, since you saw it last, of the proposed overlay district that's been designed for the Big Woods. You all have been working on this proposed ordinance since, you know, spring. I believe it was in April 2013, you were asked...
Yeah, did you increase the volume a little bit, Debbie? We're having trouble hearing.
I don't know how you increase the volume. Is that better?
Can y'all hear her? Can y'all hear?
Karen, we're having issues.
I think it might be a little better.
Normally, it's not a problem here in me. Okay, I think that's probably better. Is that better?
I think that's a little better.
It's a little better? You don't mean, yeah, okay. Anyway, since April 2013, the Planning Commission has been evaluating the existing zoning boundaries within the Big Woods, to see if the, the existing boundary, or the existing techniques that's afforded development in that district, is compatible with current trends, development trends. And given the environmental issues and constraints that is, I'm not going to say plagued with the Big Woods, but it certainly, can, it certainly constrains development, there's some opportunity for us to look at some alternative zoning techniques, which may afford an opportunity for landowners to sell their property, and to hopefully develop it in an assemblage type of fa- fashion. So therefore, the Planning Commission, like I said before, they evaluated the three zoning boundaries within the, the Big Woods currently. These districts have been in effect since the mid 90s, and were originally designed to basically be an extension of the With Creek Road Business Corridor, but a much more upscale version, as we do control the architectural styles that occur within this district. With this new overlay district, there is no plan to change the underlying three districts that are currently in place. This new regulation would simply be an overlay that could be utilized by a developer, but he has to petition the City Council through the public hearing process, in order to activate its use. It's a mixed-use regulation that is very common throughout the, the nation now. It offers a lot of flexibility in design, and it would allow some wetland credits to be used, in trying to create a residential yield that would help support any type of commercial activity that would occur. There is, of course, with it being classified as a mixed-use, there's both residential and commercial components. The Planning Commission has evaluated those extremely thoroughly over the past few months. And the goal tonight is not necessarily to go over each one of those components in detail, but to basically bring the Planning Commission up to speed with the changes that the Planning Commission, or the planning staff has made, since your last review of this last month. With that said, in order to activate this new overlay district, it requires three public hearings this evening. The first public hearing is going to be to designate the overlay district as a potential zoning classification in the comprehensive plan, and specifically, the land use map in the, the comprehensive plan. The current comprehensive plan that we have was adopted in 2009, and basically, is a, is a goal plan that the city has established for various elements, such as economy, emergency services, our school system, and our land use planning activities are mapped out in that plan. And in order for us to make zoning classification changes, that plan has to be changed to recognize the ability to use those new zoning classifications. So therefore, we are asking that you consider, under the first public hearing, to revise the land use map, to reflect the ability to use an overlay district within the area that is known as the Big Woods. That area is outlined in this particular graphic. After that public hearing occurs, there's two more public hearings that need to happen this evening. The first is the establishment of the new regulation, which is going to be called a planned unit development mixed-use ordinance. And it would be a new addition to the zoning ordinance. It's a new article, and that article will be numbered Article 8.4, and it's going to be titled Planned Unit Development, Planned Unit Development Mixed Use. The third public hearing is a revision to an existing ordinance that's already in the books, it's already in our zoning ordinance. It was developed or created in 2009, as a part of a mixed-use concept that the City Council adopted for our waterfront areas. And what we decided is that in order to activate this new mixed-use for the Big Woods, we would need to go back and make some revisions to the existing provisions, and we have done that, under Article 8.2. That article was presented in your agenda package. It only requires minor modifications in order, in order to reference the new mixed-use ordinance. And I said I was going to be brief, and I promise, it doesn't sound like it so far. To kind of go over the, the discussion that the Planning Commission had last month, which was extremely productive, everyone was very engaged, and I think everyone understood this new ordinance, which is very complicated to do. But there were some issues, there were some outstanding issues that needed to be resolved. And since then, the, the planning staff has gone back, and we've kind of looked at the discussion that you all had, and we've made some revisions accordingly. Now, in the agenda package that you received, you received an updated version of the Article 8.4, which is the planned development ordinance, mixed-use. And the areas that were added and/or changed were striped through, and they were supposed to be highlighted, but our copier didn't pick that highlighting up. So we do have one highlighted version here this evening. If you're interested in just kind of looking through it, it will help you to find these changes very easily. So we do apologize for the inconvenience on the highlighting. But nevertheless, the first change that was made, was to the residential density yield, based on the wetland credit allowances. If you recall, at our last meeting, we talked about whether or not, what kind of, of an allowance should we be given for wetlands, in exchange for density yield. We initially started out with 50%, allowing a 50% credit to be given for the use of non-titled wetlands, in creating a density yield up to 12 units per acre. That 12 units per acre was capped, because in the comprehensive plan, the land use map section, there's a recommendation that our high-density residential areas not exceed 12 units per acre. Let me get some water for you. However, there was some discussion, because some of the properties that are tucked away in the Big Woods, some of them are small parcels, and they may all be wetlands. You didn't want to eliminate those property owners' ability to basically be included in a unified development that may be occurring on, around them, with more developable land. So there was discussion about increase in the number of wetlands, the percentage of wetland yield, in exchange for a reduction of the units, yield, that are for residential. So what I did is I did a sliding scale. And that sliding scale is basically reflected here, starting out with, if you get a 50% credit, you can yield up to 12 residential units. Oh, boy. For every 10% increase in credit, there's a one-unit reduction in the residential yield. So ultimately, if you have 100% credit, you'd be allowed a seven-unit yield, which is the same number that you guys have recommended, when we were discussing this last month. I think I might have to stop. One of the other items that we discussed last month, was whether or not, how much square footage do we want a commercial building to have, that doesn't give the big-box appearance, and would not compete with some of our larger anchor stores in the community? Staff had originally said 5,000 square foot maximum, without a conditional use permit for any commercial act, for any commercial use, that was in, within the commercial areas of this new district. We talked about bumping that up, and so we did elevate it to 15,000 square feet. So, under the draft that you have now, if you have, you can have up to 15,000 square feet of retail floor area, before taking in the conditional use permit process. That was a significant increase. But it's something that you can decide tonight, whether or not you feel is appropriate. One of the other items that we discussed for the commercial, was that we would not dictate how much square footage should be provided, but we would offer up a preferred amount. And that preferred amount is 1,000 square feet of commercial area, for every acre of developed property, that's within the development prep track. Also, there needs to be a limitation, as to how much a developer can provide. In other words, we want to make sure that there's a balance of commercial and residential, but you want to make sure that you don't have such an excessive amount of residential or of commercial, that cannot be supported by the residential. But with that said, we talked about creating a 500-square-foot minimum, for commercial activities within a project area. There's no magic to the numbers, it's just based on our comparison with our existing commercial corridor, and the residential units that we have in the city today. Sequencing of the construction was another item that we discussed. And trying to determine at what point, and how much development needs to, of commercial development needs to occur, my goodness, I might have to wait. We talked about 76% of residential, no more than 76% could be occupied, until all infrastructure supporting the commercial was stubbed out. So we've included that language in the ordinance, for your consideration. Kevin, I'm okay?
You're okay.
I'm not dying. This would only happen if you're trying to get something done. In order, what we were trying to achieve by only requiring a stubout of infrastructure, was to avoid buildings sitting vacant, with no occupants, and causing a blight look in the community. However, if the utilities are stubbed out, any type of future development that occurs, has got to go through the site plan review, and architectural review process. However, that's an administrative process. And unless the new plan does not meet the overall theme of the overlay district project, under the master plan, would it have to go back through the public hearing process? I know that's something that we talked about last year, I mean, last month, as to avoid making developers go through that process again. If it generally matched with the overall intent was. And finally, we talked about eliminating building separation, building height, yard, and setback requirements. However, we didn't talk about eliminating the front yard setbacks in the residential areas, but we did go back and we relaxed some of the requirements that we had originally placed on those areas. Initially, we had asked for a 20-foot setback, if it was, if the structures, if the single-family structures had a front-load garage. We reduced that to 15 feet. If there is no front-load garage, it would be a 10-foot setback. And then, of course, any development that occurs along Victory Boulevard, has to comply with the underlying front yard setback requirements along that street. In fencing, we added language that would require administrative approval, for any fencing along a public street, but if it's an internal street, or the fence is going to be placed in an internal area of the development, then that's controlled by the homeowners association. That concludes my presentation.
Debbie.
Oh, my goodness.
We appreciate that, Debbie.
I am so sorry.
There's not a one of us that, that has had to conduct a meeting, or speak for a group that hadn't had that same thing happen to us at one time or another. So, don't worry about it, you did a good job. All right, now, later, if anybody has any questions of Debbie, I think I'm going to go ahead and proceed with the public hearing. You know Debbie will be here, but maybe she, she kind of gets herself together here a little bit before we can roll our any. Okay, we'll go ahead then, and take the first item, which is a public hearing item, and it's number one. A request by the City of Pecosin to amend the city's comprehensive plan for 2008 through 2028, future land use map, to designate the Big Woods area, approximately 260 acres, located at the western gateway to the city, on both the south and north sides of Victory Boulevard, as a planned unit development mixed-use overlay district. Okay, at this time, we will go ahead and open the public hearing on this, and if you have anything that you wish to, to address the Planning Commission concerning this item, please come forward at this time, come to the podium, and give us your name and your address. Come on up, buddy.
Madam Chairwoman, members of the Planning Commission, my name is Buddy Spence, I live at 1609 Calthupnek Road, in York County.
Buddy, wait, wait just a minute now, we want to be able to hear you. It might, all right, it might be better if you speak into this microphone, is that, do you think that's right, Vicki?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you want him to speak in this one?
Yes, he would.
Okay, if you would, so that, so that people at home can hear you too.
Okay, my name is Buddy Spence, I live at 1609 Calthupnek Road, in York County. I own Pecosin Realty, which trades as Mid-Atlantic Commercial and Residential, and we have been involved with some of the property owners, and, on the south side of Victory Boulevard, in trying to achieve, everybody working together to create a zoning district that would be an asset to all the property owners there. And I think, I think everybody in, within that group is working together very well, and wants to see something happen there. What I, what I would, and I definitely applaud the effort that the, the ordinance, the ordinance really is, is a great futuristic ordinance. There was an article in the paper today, I don't know how many people saw that, but it, it talked about the housing, housing communities of the future, and what kind, what's going to be desirable, and what'd be the, the housing trend that would take place over, over the next several years. And that was exactly what your ordinance accommodates, where there are communities of walkability, flexibility, and how, how they ordered, how the community is designed, and whatever. But what you, what the, what the Planning Commission staff, and those working on this ordinance, you hit the nail on the head, in regards to what they see as being the, the future housing communities of the future. I did want to bring you this, we did collectively, the property that's within the red lines here, this is a wetland analysis done by a wetland consultant, it has not been confirmed by the Corps of Engineers yet, and you can see in that, in that property, which includes the city's 18 acres, it's in the middle of that, you can see that, that there are considerable wetlands there. One thing I would like, I would like for the Planning Commission to consider, expanding the area that they would incorporate in, in, in the zoning district, to include on the south side of Oxford Run, this triangle property, and this property right here, which is, which belongs to McDonald's Associates, without my pardon, and, and Wayne and Carol Ann Martin, and, and other family members there. But I think all, all the property owners that would like to incorporate it. We believe that, that because there's a limited amount of land use here, with the restrictions of the wetlands that are going to be here, in order to get a well-planned community, and really to that village downtown effect, that the additional acreage would probably be beneficial to the overall development of the area, and the end result. We also, the piece of property on the south side, as you can see, these areas are wetlands. When you come to the south side of Oxford Run, there, there's virtually no, no wetlands found on that, on this spot, there's this little spot right there, which would give you more flexibility in, in planning. And we believe it'd be an asset to the overall ordinance, and we appreciate you considering that. And I thank you. And I thank you.
All right. Thank you, Buddy.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
When was that study done, Mr. Spencer?
It's been done the last couple of months.
Come back to, to the podium, because I don't know if anybody else had any other questions they wanted to, look like maybe...
The study was completed within the last couple of months, and all, all the, all the property owners participated in, in, in working with the consultants to do that. It does need to go to the Corps of Engineers for confirmation, so that can vary a little bit when the final delineation comes out.
Thank you.
Mr. Spencer, there's some, a couple of obvious parcels right adjacent to that. Have you talked to those landowners as well? Are they interested in, in this overlay district as well? Or have they shown no interest in participating?
We, we have contacted Jamie Bowles with the Victory Christian Center, and we've talked to Ken Tudor. They, they all on board and would like to work together in how, how the overall planned community shapes out. We are working with Brandon Currents, who is a land planner and architect who designed Port Warwick and Newport News and has been involved in several of the communities. And we, we believe that putting this together and whatever, if it, we believe we can put together something that would be not on the asset in the immediate future for Pecosin, but something that people would be proud of many years in the future. But it does take enough land. Part, part of the upland property there will be lost because you've got to put retention ponds in, and you can't put retention in wetlands. You've got to put it in upland property. And the configuration of the property, you can't afford to mitigate the wetlands, except unless it's a very small amount, because it gets very expensive. So, but we look forward to the opportunity of trying to work, work with it and bring something back to you that, when the ordinance is passed, bring something back to you that would, that you all would be very pleased with.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, if no one else wishes to speak on this particular item, this public hearing item, we'll move on, take it under consideration, Planning Commission. All right.
Debbie, what would be involved in extending this to the south?
We would have to incorporate notification to the property owners, so we would go back through the public hearing process. That's exactly what we did with this particular land use map change, is we notified every property owner that was within the boundaries of the Big Woods, along with those that lied adjacent to it.
That could be done at any time. It doesn't have to be done in advance to, if we, if we were to add this today, we could come back later and add that.
Yes, sir.
If that's what the property owners wished.
Yes, sir. That option is always available when they decide to pursue the master plan process. However, given the extent of cost associated with creating the various studies that needs to accompany the master plan, I would strongly suggest that someone petition the planning commission and city council to extend that boundary before going through the master plan rezoning process. But you're right, they can activate that at any particular time.
Okay, anybody else have any thoughts or concerns? If not, are we ready to make a motion to accept this one?
To make a motion, we recommend approval to the council.
Okay, second.
Second, ma'am.
Vicki.
Certainly. Mr. Travis?
Aye.
Mr. Garding?
Yes.
Mr. Avery?
Aye.
Mr. Clifton?
Aye.
Mr. Titlow?
Aye.
Mr. Garden?
Aye.
Chairwoman Schreiber?
Aye.
Madam Chairwoman, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Vicki. Okay, the second item, which we'll have a public hearing on, is an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Pecosin by adding Article 8 dot four, mixed-use overlay district, which will encompass the Big Woods area, approximately 260 acres located at the western gateway of the city on both the south and north sides of Victory Boulevard. Okay, we'll open the public hearing on this item. Yes, sir, come right up.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, good evening. My name is Lamont Myers. I reside in 107 Two Turkey Run in Yorktown, and here tonight, I'm Director of Development for the Mid-Atlantic Companies. I work with Buddy. And I just really, I'll be very brief and really want to speak on the next two public hearings, but really wanted to just speak in support of these ordinance. I really want to commend Debbie and the staff for the work that they've done. They have really, I think, put together an ordinance that balances the, the best interests of the community with the landowners, and it also provides the flexibility to really bring you some creativity in design. And really, that's about all I had to say. I've been involved in this business for about 30 years on both the public and private side, and just the spirit of cooperation and the proactive way that the city and the staff and that you all have done to, to promote this area, I think it's going to pay real dividends. So I just want to thank you, and Debbie, thank you and your staff for all your hard work, and I certainly hope that you will support this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Myers.
Thank you.
Okay, if nothing, no more, no visitors to the podium, we'll go ahead and close this audience for visitors and take this under consideration. Any comments on this particular item? Motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve it as, as listed.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Garden?
Aye.
Mr. Titlow?
Aye.
Mr. Clifton?
Aye.
Mr. Avery?
Aye.
Mr. Garding?
Yes.
Mr. Travis?
Aye.
Chairwoman Schreiber?
Aye.
Madam Chairwoman, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
All right. Moving on to number three, an ordinance amending Article 8.2, planned development districts generally of the zoning ordinance to reference the proposed Article 8.4, planned unit development mixed-use ordinance. Anyone wish to come and speak on, in the public hearing on this matter? Okay, we'll go ahead and close this one, and Planning Commission, anyone have any, any thoughts?
Make a motion, we recommend approval.
Okay, we'll take a second.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Travis?
Aye.
Mr. Garding?
Yes.
Mr. Avery?
Aye.
Mr. Clifton?
Aye.
Mr. Titlow?
Aye.
Mr. Garden?
Aye.
Chairwoman Schreiber?
Aye.
Madam Chairwoman, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay. With that said, that completes that section of three that we have. And these items that we've just passed on, now, you're welcome to, we have only recommended this, and of course, the council will take this matter up at their next scheduled meeting, which will be September 23rd. And if you wish to speak further, they would welcome your comments, I'm sure. Okay, we'll move on to the fourth item, which we're having a public hearing on, and it's a request by Pecosin Animal Welfare Sanctuary, PAWS Incorporated, applicant and property owner to establish and operate a pet sanctuary, short-term, long-term housing facility, at 181 Messick Road, tax map parcel number 32-01-00-0044, zoned R2, single-family residential. He's giving the presentation, Kevin. All right.
Give Debbie a break.
Thank you, Debbie. Debbie's breathing a sigh of relief. Oh, come on. Have a heart.
Chairwoman and members of council, we have received a request for a conditional use permit from the Pecosin Animal Welfare Sanctuary to operate a use that is not specifically permitted anywhere in the city. And this is to run a sanctuary for cats at 181 Messick Road. This is about halfway down Messick. It consists of approximately, it consists of four parcels, about three acres, but they're identified as one singular tax parcel in the deed, surrounded by, to the north and northeast there, mostly conservation district, a lot of wetlands and marshland there. Within, if you put a 250-foot radius around the property, there would be approximately a dozen homes or so, single-family dwellings that are currently occupied. It's presently zoned R2 residential, which is our highest-density single-family residential district. Properties or newly platted parcels, rather, need to be, consist of more than 18,000 square feet in this district. As stated previously, Article 1, Section 18 of our ordinance allows for any use that is not specifically permitted anywhere or in the parcel's specified zoning district to apply, to petition city council with a recommendation from the planning commission to ask for permission to use the property for a use of that nature. PAWS is a not-for-profit organization. They're presently attempting to go through the IRS's 501(c)(3) process, and they, they trap cats throughout the city, spay and neuter them, ensure that they get their vaccines and care for them in methods of that nature. They are requesting that they keep approximately 50 felines on the property, and this will be mainly in the former home structure on the property. The house that sits there consists of about 840 square feet. There's also a smaller, it's less than 100 square feet, outbuilding where they'll also keep cats. Like I mentioned before, the site consists of four separate parcels, but collectively they are identified as tax parcel number 32144. The, the parcels at their nearest point are set back 170 feet east of Messick Road, so the property is very well screened. The property's perimeter is highly vegetated and well-screened from adjacent property owners, which is certainly a concern of staff. This is the view of the property from Messick. You can see there's a white SUV there in the background. That's where the property begins. There's a, a gate there that is locked during, when PAWS representatives are not at the property. Here's a picture from the gate. You can see the house in the background, and it's tough to see, and you're right there. Once again, this is a very well-screened property. Another view, the house would sit directly behind that vegetation at the fence there. Another picture of the home. This is that outbuilding that they have, that they're also keep some felines. And here's the lone cat that I saw when I was at the property. Which is quite impressive. All the concerns that you would have about a use of this nature during my site inspection, I did not witness. There was no foul odor. There weren't cats all over the place, which was highly impressive. Overall, the, I'll repeat this, the property's very well-screened. Even if you're immediately adjacent, you're not going to be able to see this use. Most of the cats will be placed indoors. However, provision should be made to ensure that the cats kept outdoors will be confined to the limits of the property. The organization did mention in their conditional use permit, they have aspirations to ensure that the fence is built in a way that will not allow the cats to climb up there. Keeping cats on property is certainly difficult. However, we do visit that in our conditions that we're recommending. Here are our conditions, bear with me. Number one, appointments shall be limited to between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. daily. The youth shall have one year from the issuance of this permit to provide the city with a plan outlining measure, measures to be taken to ensure felines are kept within the confines of the property. Said plan shall be reviewed and approved by the city and implemented within two years from the issuance of this permit. Three, all existing vegetation located on the boundary of the property must be perpetually maintained for screening purposes. Any needed replacement of this vegetation shall consist of evergreens of no less than six feet tall at the time of planning. The replacement there is in line with what we require for buffers within the city, vegetated buffers. Over the course of one year from the issuance of this permit, city staff will monitor the vegetated perimeter of the property to ensure that the vegetation satisfactorily screens the use from adjacent properties during all months of the year. If the screening is found not to be satisfactory during this time, the property owner shall submit and implement a plan approved by city staff which successfully shields the use from view of adjacent property owners. This, I call this the winter months condition. Vegetation can certainly thin out during those times, and we want to make sure that it's satisfactorily screened throughout the year. Five, the operation shall obtain all required local, state, and federal permits. Not sure we're going to have to worry about that here, but that's a catch-all condition that we recycle. Upon the discontinuance of such use for a continuous period of two years or more, the conditional use permit shall become null and void. If at any time the operation is in violation of any local, state, or federal regulations, including the conditions set forth in this use permit, the city reserves the right to revoke the permit. Eight, the youth shall not house any more than 50 cats daily on average over the course of the month. This allows them, if they have 51, if they have 60, if they have 70 on any given day, that's fine. Just within a course of, over a course of a month, they shall average no more than 50 daily, just in case any of their kittens, or any of their cats have kittens. And if at any time the operation is not in compliance with the conditions set use in this permit, it shall be subject to revocation. That is all I have. We have members from PAWS here. I'm sure they're willing to answer any questions you have, as am I.
All right, Kevin, thank you. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll go ahead and open audience, I mean, the public hearing on this item. And if anyone does wish to come to the podium and speak to the planning commission, please do so at this time, and give us your name and address. Fine, thank you.
Something wrong with the film, because he missed a shed out back. It's a four-door shed out back. I don't know how he missed that, but anyway.
Name and address, sir.
Butch Connor, 175 Messick, right next door.
Okay.
Fifty cats, a lot of cats, be living next door to somebody. I'm already having trouble. I didn't have no trouble when Ms. Barber was there. I don't think there was as many cats. I'm putting bricks up under the fence. Cats is coming and going. I'm seeing them jump over the top of the fence. So, I mean, I don't know what this commission is supposed to do, but I mean, what am I supposed to do as far as a taxpaying citizen in Pecosin about my property values? If I go to sell, I mean, you see the shrubbery there, you know? It should be well-maintained better than that. I think a better fence should be put up between my property and theirs. I mean, if a cat can jump six foot, and I've seen it with my own self, and I've caught five in my live trap. I've dotted them with orange paint. They, they're aware of it. I've already told them, they're good people, I commend their efforts. I really do. But I mean, you know, when you live next door to them, there's two pages, two sides to every page too, you know what I'm saying? So, take that into consideration.
Okay, certainly, Mr. Connor. Thank you. Anyone else wish to come to the podium and speak for or against?
We would like to speak for.
Come on up.
T-shirts will be posted.
Give us y'all's names and address.
I'm Rhonda Herr. I live on, with Creek Road.
Karen Air, 17 Island Way.
Lori Colly. I live at Southern Kirby Court.
All right.
We'd just like to say that this is more than just about the property. This is about the City of Pecosin having a need that we're going to help address. The cats in the city, the feral population, even the stray population, the drop-offs down at Messick Road, all, all these places, these cats are just multiplying and multiplying. And together as a group, we addressed the situation as individuals, but we can do so much more as a group. But in order to do that, we have to have a property where these cats can come to after we catch them, we get the appointments to get them fixed. Then they have to have one to three days of rehab. They can be released back into their colonies. These will be managed colonies, but we need this property. And... And Ms. Barbara had a vision, and we want to continue that vision. And unfortunately, today, we lost Mr. Paul.
Oh, my gosh.
And this is what they wanted this property used for. We understand that it's always not going to be pleasant living next to the cats, but I think we do a darn good job maintaining the property in a good condition. We're making provisions to put a structure at the top of the fence that will not allow the cats to get out. We've only had one cat come back orange, not five. Anyway, and if you have other questions, but the city, I think, will benefit from letting us do this. It's already benefited by letting us do this as individuals, but as a group, we'll be able to apply for grants that will, we can use the money in the city once we're 501(c)(3). But again, without this property, we won't be able to do that. And we're already working with animal control. They've already ordered more traps for us to use in the city, for the city. We are already working with other organizations, such as Operation Catsnip, Positively Precious Adoptions.
Lots of local vets, too.
Lots of local vets. We're bringing business to the city, because a lot of our adoptions are outside the city, and they're starting to use the resources in the city when they come to adopt from us. We keep it very low-key, and we hope that you will let us have this property for this purpose. Oh, one more thing, our neighbors, with the exception of Butch, have never complained. And matter of fact, some of them come to the property and volunteer. They scoop litter boxes and help with the animals. So, I'm sorry they're not here tonight, maybe they didn't plan that very well, but any questions?
Once we become a 501(c)(3), we will have the resources. Right now, it's five of us doing the job for the whole community. There are five people that are going out, and then some people, volunteers in community, do want to help us with this issue within this whole community. We have, once we get our 501(c)(3), which we're working on, hoping to get that, hopefully, within the next 30 to 60 days, we will have the money. It takes a lot of money to do what we do, and we don't, we are getting donations that trickle in from adoptions, from just people that want to help us. So, once we get that, we can get our grants, and we can have more money to do more good work. And we are, we have visited very, a few residences in this community, just a few, and there are many, many, many. Once you speak, I think, you guys probably know your neighbors or someone down the street that have strays that are feeding, that are, "I'm taking care of this cat, it showed up at my house, I'm feeding it." Well, there, some are not spaying and neutering, so of course, they're multiplying. So, we help them with the resources, to trap, to release. If they want to continue to feed, if they want to care for these animals, that's great, we can release them, they will care for them and feed them, but they will not reproduce. And that will help the city. You're not going to have the animals wandering the community, getting into the businesses, trashcans, getting into the, getting out and being hit by cars and getting disease. We're doing the best we can as five individuals, hoping to get more volunteers as we, as we become more organized and have the means that we can take this to a bigger level and help the community, because it is a problem. You just start talking to people about the animals, the cats basically, more or less, in this community, and it is a much bigger problem than most people's community can even fathom. And it's just not being talked about, people aren't being educated. We are trying to bring the education about what we can do, what has caused this problem, what can we all do as a community to come together, because it is a community issue. It is causing, it is something that we're trying to do our best to control. We're probably, we're just doing the best we can.
In our defense, the cats were there in that neighborhood before PAWS moved into the property. That, Messick Road is inundated with cats, so just because they're there, doesn't mean they're our cats that we have on the property that we've chosen to be there. There's tons of cats there. I almost hit a cat the other day, it wasn't one of ours.
They're hitting the road.
They're hitting the road, yeah.
And babies are left without mamas, and we're taking those babies and trying to help them. There are, like I said, there are citizens who have, are feeding 30 or 50 at a time that have issues, and we're trying, so we're just trying to do one little bit at a time. We can only do a little bit at a time. We're hoping to take it much bigger, because it's, there's a need for that.
And we're also going to keep the teenagers occupied, because a bunch want to come and get their community service hours at the sanctuary. So, we're keeping those kids out of trouble, too. And if anybody would like a card, we have.
And just some stats, I tried to pull, we keep records on every cat that we come across, and just some stats I jotted down today. We have just 20 permanent residents right now. Those are cats that mainly Ms. Barbara had, and some that we had brought in. Every, for every cat I think she brought to the sanctuary, she also took one home to Mr. Paul. So, we would go over to his house every month, too, and cut toenails and keep up with him. So, our hearts are centered tonight, losing him. He's been a good friend to us, as Barbara is, and we think about them every day, and we, we want to honor what they felt like was so important. I mean, he was the director of NASA, but he'll talk to his kitty cats like, you know, they're just the most wonderful creatures on earth, and it's very sad to see the disrespect and sometimes violence that happens to these cats, because people are upset that they're in the area, and what we want to do is try to lower that population so that they're, you know, we want people to know we're trying to help, we just have to do it at our pace, because we don't have the funding right now. We have 20, 20 living there right now. We have 10 adoptable adults at the sanctuary, and we have adopted out 10 adults from the sanctuary. We have adopted 51 kittens that we have all been born out here in the marsh, you know, sadly, but, I mean, that is a huge problem. And I really had no idea, as someone that's lived here for quite some time, had no idea about the overpopulation in the city. It really is very, very sad. Right now, we have about 10 adoptable kittens. We are taking kittens, you know, and cats to the vet, you know, so that's one of the ways we use our money that we get. We're taking six to PETA on Wednesday, they're actually coming to Pecosa, which they do once a month sometimes. You know, we're just doing it as, as much as we can between five people. We have one other member, he's not here, he works at night.
And we have jobs, you know, we have jobs to go to, and then do this, you know, as well.
And one of the other things we're going to focus on when we get our grants of money, when we receive our nonprofit status, is called Trap Neuter Return, and it is the way that these cats are going to be able to survive and live in our community. They are fixed, they're given a rabies shot, and they're tested for HIV and feline leukemia. And without that, if you don't know anything about, those are very contagious diseases, and it's really important to be able to determine, you know, whether they have them or not. The old way was to come in and scoop them all up and take them to the SPCA and euthanize them. Well, I don't even think that's, you know, I don't know why they even thought that, but that didn't work, it doesn't work. And so, the United States, the world, actually, if you get on Facebook and you get on a computer, the whole world is going towards Trap Neuter Return, where these cats are managed in colonies and being fed and checked, and if you get a new cat coming in, you trap it, and you fix it, and you monitor it, and you feed it. I mean, we have a plan, but our sanctuary is so important for us to be able to have these cats and kittens that people are calling us daily about, you know, and we just, we, it gives us a place to keep them for a while before we can adopt them.
The community is contacting us, so there, there's a need. They want that, they want, they want our help, whether they want to keep them, whether they want us to help them adopt them out, they.
They are asking for our help.
They're asking, because they're inundated, they're overwhelmed, and they don't know what to do. And sometimes, all we can offer, if we're full, all we can offer them is advice, here's what we suggest you do, here's maybe where you can take them, other organizations that might, that we can work with to help. So, we're offering solutions. If we can't help them right now, because we're so small, and we don't have the space or the money or manpower, we can offer suggestions on how to help the community right now.
Any questions? Okay.
Well, if we have any, we'll get you to come back.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Anybody else? Okay, if not, we'll close this public hearing, and we'll go ahead and take this under consideration. One thing I wanted to say, I'll say this right up front, I do know there's been a problem with cat population, particularly in the area you're speaking of, in the Messick area, for some time, because I had talked to Barbara on a number of occasions about it, and of course, knowing her devotion to the, to the task that she undertook, she kind of did it on her own for as long as she could, and I think, you know, did a miraculous job. But there was a problem, and there is a problem here in the community. And my thought, when I saw this on the agenda, is that, and I'm going to say, knowing several of these ladies, as I do, and I see one lady over there that I know has worked for many years, and I knew her through the parish thrift store, she worked diligently to try to, to control the problem. These ladies, I would venture to say, would, you would not have a problem with keeping this facility clean and neat, and I don't think that's going to be a problem, because I imagine, just knowing them, that they would not let a cat be in conditions that were otherwise, because they are devoted. But, but when I saw this on the agenda, and I saw what they're, what they wrote in their goal, it stands to reason that if given the chance, they may be able to really help to alleviate this problem through grants, obtaining money and so forth, and do it in a way that will be merciful and kind to the, I mean, to the animals. I know that's a lot of cats in a place, I know it is, and the fencing is certainly something that I've, I've thought about, because it is hard to contain cats. It's hard. And I wonder, that, the fencing is the thing that probably I was most interested in, in knowing that they are going to work on that, because, I mean, they're going to have to contain them, and they want to contain them, they don't want them to get out and get, get gone, I'm sure, and due to safety. I know there was an incident that Barbara described to me that happened to some cats a few years back that was just really bad, and I know lots of things, there are people, some people who are not very nice to animals and do some very mean things, so I'm sure these ladies are going to try their best to keep them secure, because they don't want things like that to occur. And the thought about teenagers helping, I think any time that you can get young people to empathize with any creature, whether it be a cat, any creature, I think is good. And that is something that interests me a great deal in your project. I personally would, would be willing to give them a chance, because I think this is a good way to handle this, to see if they can do it, by getting some, some volunteers and money. I'm personally for doing it. And I think this has been, if I'm not mistaken, Barbara had been housing some cats there and doing this, and a lot of people in the community didn't even know this was, was there. So, I mean, I knew, because she had told me, but I didn't know otherwise. But, you know, it is something where I can see where Mr. Connor, he has a point. I mean, certainly, you want to be good neighbors to each other, and if, if you have a problem, you know, y'all, if you could work together and try not to become enemies, and try to focus on, on helping the community, because I've been to Messick Point and seen droves of cats there, and of course, without being spayed, neutered, you get more and more. So, it's a worthwhile project, in my opinion. And that's all I'm going to say, y'all take it from there. Greg's, Greg's a cat, his wife's a cat lover, so I don't know how he's going to stand on this.
I've partaken of some of their products. As a matter of fact, my daughter has one of their kits.
I thought maybe it might have been the case.
And my son has two, and they're doing very well as well, thank you. Kevin, Debbie, just, if this residence was occupied by somebody living there, is there anything that, in our code, that prevents that person from having 50 cats?
Yes, city code prohibits any, any property within the city from having 10 or more cats on the property. This, so this conditional use permit, along with allowing them to do what they want to do, would also be conditionally allowing them to exceed that number.
How many acres did you say this?
It's approximately three. The larger parcel where the house sits is about one and a half.
So, it's a pretty good sized parcel.
I guess, okay, it's three acres, it's zoned such that it can be developed, how many units?
Talking to 18,000 square feet per lot, so my math isn't good, bear with me. You'd be pushing to get six houses there.
Six units, that 10 cats apiece, that's 60 cats. Technically, you could put 60 cats on that property under, I mean, obviously, that would take redevelopment, but within that, under current code, if the ladies all wanted to build a house there and live there, they could each take their 10 cats and live there, is basically what it boils down to. Thank you.
Well, I would just simply offer, I support the idea, I mean, I do not have any of your cats. My daughter has three cats, plus the other cats we need. I would just point out that if this organization becomes a 501(c)(3), they become, they become a private entity even in and of itself, they are separate from the folks who are running it, just like a corporation. It is a corporation, it's a nonprofit corporation. So, I do think that if you're going to approve it with that intent, there needs to be some very strict guidelines in there as to what steps will be taken to prevent the animals from leaving the property. I know they're interested in doing that, but do keep in mind that it is no longer a bunch of volunteers doing something. It is now a, a separate entity in and of itself, and I think you do need to put some guidelines on the entity. I'm not smart enough to know what they would be, and I think, I know you have something in the, in the proposal there, but I think that does have to happen. That would be my suggestion.
I would hope a good faith effort on their part, as you get that classification and you get a grant, that that money would first go to containing the cats and, you know, to consider, consideration of your neighbors, and to protect your cats.
There's, you know, there's one issue I was thinking of, is that it seems like, you know, your effort is definitely, you know, very humane and outstanding, I applaud that. But I know there's a couple of things that maybe, you know, that like, I know cats try to check out other cats, and so, to the best of your intentions, you've got your cats covered, but other cats, I imagine other cats come around that aren't part of your organization. And then I was wondering if there are any larger varmints that like eat cats, that would, that are attracted to this area? And I was just kind of curious, because you guys could do the best thing in the world to do everything you're doing, but what's outside the fence that wants to get in the fence?
Well, all of our cats are fixed, so they really wouldn't be drawn interest of other cats, because they're all spayed and neutered, too, they're not going to eat. As far as other animals, there are some raccoons on the property, they like to eat, but that's about it. We never see them.
And if you're having them, one thing, too, if you're vaccinating cats against rabies and so forth, I see that as another plus, because with the spread of that disease, rabies, through animals, that's definitely a plus. If there are a lot of outside cats roaming around, unvaccinated, they're subject to getting rabies, and then that's, that's bad news for everybody that lives close by. So, I think that, that was another thing that I thought was, you know, it's a good point.
There are good spence that you can purchase, it goes around the top, it's $300 for 100 feet, and that's a lot of acreage. But we do have a board member who is a machinist, and he's already bought the materials, it's just a matter of getting it in its bars, and it has a mesh, and when the cats try to come out, the mesh sinks, so they get pushed back down, and then it pops back up. So, they're, they've already developed it, but we're just trying to take a cheaper route by having our other board member actually build it. So, we're in the process. Does that help?
As far as other larger animals that you try, those, these cats are already As far as other larger animals that you try, those cats are already roaming the city code. There are pockets of 50 and 30 and 100 cats living in sections of this community that are not being protected, that are not being spayed, that are not being, so those animals that are running loose in the city, because people decide they don't want them anymore, and they let them loose, and they don't spray, do, or they let them go, and they breed, that's already happening in all around this community. So wherever they are, wherever they may be, all over, those larger animals or whoever are already out there, for those animals that we haven't been able to get to yet, so it's not, you know what I'm saying, it's already out there. And these cats are, as our cats, the ladies can take theirs, these are the community's cats. These are not our cats.
They don't belong to anyone.
These are the animals of Picocen. This is the community's, these are the community's animals that the community has thrown away, that they have discarded, that they have decided they don't want anymore, that they have left to breed. These are the community's cats that we are caring for. So they are not our cats, they are the ones we've decided to help, to get a better life or to get adopted, and we hope to reach out to other parts of the community where there are many, many, many other community cats that are out there. So we're just trying to help this city with. The city that we love, I've lived in this city for years, I've come and gone from this city, and I've been back now for 10 years. I grew up here for a number of years, and I love this city. This is home to me. And I'd love to do anything I can do to help this community solve a problem like this that we have, and like to educate the community about this situation that has been here for a long time.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Gos.
I would just say, they have to submit the plan for the fence to the city for approval, and I would just, I'm sure it would already be considered, but not only does the fence have to be of a structure that the animals can't go over it, but we also need to consider the animals going under it, and how much of the fence needs to be buried, some type of metal mesh or something like that. But as long as they have a plan submitted that the city feels comfortable with, can keep them from going either way, then I'm confident.
If anybody knows anybody that knows anything about fences, that wants to help and give us some ideas, I mean, like I said, it's a community role, so we would love to have anybody that knows anything about how to do this and what makes it, it's a chain of fences, it's the whole property, and it's all. So if anybody knows anything about fencing, or can volunteer their time to do some stuff for us, you know, and we're hoping the 501(c)(3) is, I already have this, the community that said they will come and help us maintain the house, help with some things that want to be a part of helping us do that stuff.
See me after the meeting. I know a number of Boy Scouts who need an evil project.
I think that's, that's an act.
Yes, and we'd love to give them projects to do, so.
Outstanding. That sounds very, very good.
Madam Chairwoman, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend approval.
A second.
All right. Okay. Mr. Garden?
Aye.
Mr. Titlow?
Aye.
Mr. Clifton?
Aye.
Mr. Avery?
Aye.
Mr. Gardy?
Yes.
Mr. Travis?
Aye.
Chairwoman Schreiber?
Aye.
Madam Chairwoman, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero. Okay, and again, of course, we are recommending void, so this will also, I assume, go on the 23rd to City Council, and, you know, they'll make the ultimate decision. But as for us, I think we wish you the best of luck, and certainly, you know, hope that you'll be able to do your project well. Hope so. All right, let's go on to the next thing on the agenda, which is the last, and it's a request by Jesse Dunlap, applicant and property owner to establish and operate a landscaping business at 93 Firth Lane, tax map parcel number 19-01-00-0012, Zoned R1, single-family residential. Who's making the, oh, come on, Debbie, now you're all right now, go on.
I'm being quiet now. I've got my breath back.
She's not coughing, she's okay.
Thank you, Chairwoman Schreiber and Planning Commission. This is our second conditional use permit application tonight, our last public hearing. And this is a request by a business hand property owner, Mr. Jesse Dunlap, who owns DSD Landscaping, is presently operating the use at 93 Firth Lane, which is a property consisting of approximately 3.28 acres, accessible off of Firth Lane, which is a private drive. And it's surrounded by R1, single-family residential. And to the south there, you can see a parcel that you all should be familiar with, was recently rezoned from B2 commercial to multifamily residential, R3. Excuse me. Debbie, your coughs are.
It's contagious.
It's contagious.
There's something wrong.
I tell you what. Anyway, it's one larger parcel. The house is approximately 4,500 square feet, quite a large structure, similar to the last one. If any use is not specifically permitted within that specified zoning district, they may petition City Council with y'all's recommendation to conduct such use with conditions as needed. The applicant's been operating this business for at least the past year or so on the property. The property consists of a single-family dwelling, which is occupied by the property owner and his family. The applicant will continue to utilize the property as living quarters and propose to operate a landscaping business as a secondary use. This would include having employees park at the residence and depart each morning, as well as storing specified materials and equipment that support the business. The perimeter of the property, it's quite a unique piece of property. It's screened pretty well from adjacent property owners with thick, mature vegetation. It's set back fairly far from With Creek Road. However, it is surrounded by that undeveloped track that has proposed for development, which is immediately adjacent. A lot of that is screening it from With Creek Road right now. That parcel, which is almost four acres itself, is heavily forested right now. Once that's developed, it'll open up that property to view from With Creek Road potentially. Here is, this is from the back of the parcel. This is from Islander Way, from the end of Islander Way. You can see through some of this vegetation here that some equipment is placed there, some materials to your right there. However, it's still kind of tough to see. Here's some dirt placed on the property. Here's some more equipment, some lighter equipment. Here's some landscaping blocks. And here's a closer view of it. Here's the front of the property. I'm assuming now that these are just where employees park when they come to the property. Mr. Dunlap could certainly elaborate on that. A larger truck, which probably supports the business, like I said, I don't want to jump to conclusions. And this is from the back of Firth Lane there, before it turns southerly there, to serves, I believe, three other single-family residences. Here's a close-up, you can see a dumpster that serves the business there. Overall, the property is very well screened during the spring and summer months, however, staff has found during the winter months that this vegetation could be insufficient. A lot of the screen from With Creek Road lays on that property that is proposed for a townhome development, so most of that property will be cleared of that vegetation. Storage and equipment operations could become quite disruptive to adjacent properties. So if the Planning Commission does ultimately recommend approval of this application to City Council, these are the conditions that staff is proposing be enacted. The hours of operation shall be limited to 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. during weekday hours, Monday through Friday. Hours of operation shall be limited from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Saturday and Sunday. The business shall have one year from the date of the issuance of this permit to create a fenced area, fenced on all sides, to completely screen the storage of materials and equipment that support the business operation. The enclosed areas shall be submitted to the city for approval, and shall be no larger an area than 50% of the floor area of the residential structure, which would be little over 2,200 square feet. This enclosure shall be located no closer than 50 feet from any property line, and must be located in the rear side yard of the property. If by the end of this one-year period, a fenced enclosure is not created for this purpose, this permit may be revoked. Vehicles used to support the operation shall be screened from public and adjacent property view, and shall be kept only in accordance with the provisions of Article 5, Section 510 of the City Zoning Ordinance, which really regulates, I believe it's over two-ton vehicles, and how they must be screened on the property. All existing vegetation located on the boundary of the property must be perpetually maintained for screening purposes. Any needed replacement of this vegetation shall consist of evergreen plants measuring no less than six feet tall at the time of planting. No commercial trash receptacle shall be permitted. Additionally, no stockpiling of landscaping waste or material debris shall be permitted. The operation shall obtain all required local, state, and federal permits. Upon the discontinuance of such use for a contiguous period of two years or more, the conditional use permit shall become null and void. If at any time the operation is in violation of any local, state, or federal regulations, including the conditions set forth in this use permit, the city reserves the right to revoke the permit. And lastly, this use shall be subject to renewal after a three-year period. City Council may opt to renew this permit indefinitely through their inaction, provided the business is operating in good standing and operating within all the above outlined That wraps that up. I'm available for any questions you may have, as is the applicant.
Okay. All right, let's go ahead then, and we'll open the public hearing on this item. If someone has anything they would like to address the Planning Commission, please come forward. Give us your name and address.
Good evening. I am Jesse. I bought the property almost exactly a year ago, August 20th is when we closed on it. We started keeping some equipment there right after the first of the year, so it's been there for, minimally, for about seven or, I guess, nine months, pretty much full bore for, since early May. We weren't living in the structure until right after my wife's birthday, so we got there about middle of April. We were at 10 Carroll Drive in Picocen, and we had kind of some issues, because through hard work, we have built a decent-sized company that employs probably seven or eight fine working Picocen guys. And we had some issues at 10 Carroll Drive, which with Debbie and Mrs. Hallway worked through, and did a good job of remedying there. This property, I found it, purchased it, I'm sure most of y'all, it seems everybody in the city is familiar with the property. But it's kind of an anomaly, just in the size, the location, the land itself. The clearing of the proposed multi-unit family stuff isn't going to affect its visibility from With Creek any more than what they've already cleared around the pond. What it will affect is the people who live in the multi-uses visibility, once those are built and live there. No more of the property will be seen than is seen right now, unless somebody buys the seven-and-a-half acre stretch, basically runs between me and the end of Wainwright Road, that was also owned by the same owner before that property was removed. I have basically a letter that I took to every homeowner who looks out their window and sees my property. In your stipulations and stuff, you guys had asked for fencing and natural screening. I've spoken with Mr. and Mrs. Ayer actually about putting up natural screening. Because of when we moved into the home, I'm more now in an optimal time to plant, so I actually have about 150 plantings that I've ordered that I'm going to put in various places to screen. The homeowner who's probably most affected is directly behind me, and when we were putting up the white vinyl fence that you guys could see some of in the images you took, I was turning the bend to go along my back, and he said he'd rather have it open, because it makes his backyard look bigger. So some of the stuff there, obviously, if it's the city telling me I need to do this to run my business, I'll put a fence up and tell him he has to enjoy the looking at the fence. But if the person who's inhibited by it doesn't want it, and would rather look at, you know, some pallets of pavers that I have there, all that dirt in the picture is for me, for the homeowner, not for the business. And I think that was an initial issue in the house as well, is it was just in disrepair, we tore out decks, we tore out trees that were down, the big pile of brush in the front. I mean, it's a three-and-a-half acre property that sat for six years, seven years, something like that. So to have all that just build up was, I think, was the initial kind of why somebody complained. We did a lot of renovation, we yanked a lot of stuff, we had a lot of piles of material that were from the house. But this was basically a letter, and all the homeowners, you can see, Mr. and Mrs. Ayer have a schedule much like myself, they're never home, so they weren't there to sign it. And I didn't know that it was going to be just the planning board today, I thought that he may be here as well, so. But that's basically the other five or six homes that can see my property. Where my guys park, where that car, where you guys saw the picture along the drive, that's at the front half of the property. I'm the only one who can see that, other than if you, like, you know, you stop and basically look back to see it. But, yeah, so that's really it. Like I said, I have a lot of plantings on order that are going to go in here in the fall, when it's a little bit more ideal time. All the dirt, like I said, you saw in the pictures, that's for me, and what will hopefully eventually be a big swimming pool someday. But it's pretty minimal, a lot of it's just more of a boneyard. We do a lot of hardscape installs out in the kitchens and living spaces. So some of the material you see there is for that, and some of it is for my house. Again, I have, you know, 1,500 square feet of porch, so. And if it's percentages, it's actually like a 5,800 square foot house.
Is it, okay.
So if I can play with that for storage area, but I don't think I will need to. The amount of space that we use outside, actually, we don't really store anything other than the pavers that we're seeing there. But I don't know if anybody had any questions of me.
Do you have access off Islander Way, or is all of your access off Firth Lane?
No, only off of Firth. So Islander Way is where I'm planning on wrapping some of those plantings to screen the Ayers. We just had to cut a lot down to grade, do some grading for Mr. Ayer to correct some of his drainage, but we're, that's where I'll be screening, is kind of that end of Islander Way. They're really the, them, and then the last lady that signed on that sheet is the resident, the other resident at the end of Islander Way. Those are really the only ones affected by it, so. And then, like I said, Mr. Ulysses and all his family at the end of Wainwright, who, they've been more than great, and I share access with them, they're, you know, they get to drive down my driveway when they need it. You know, I got people coming over my property with four-wheelers, walking their kids up my driveway and stuff, so there's nothing there that's inhibiting people to the point where they're scared to push their kids in a stroller up my driveway. And, you know, I've done as much as I can and helped as much as I can to, you know, stop there being an issue. Because I'm not ignorant to the fact of codes and compliances, I'm not ignorant to the fact that this isn't the most ideal thing to look at, but I'm also in the business of making things look better, and ultimately, you know, it's a lot of work on the house, it's a lot of work on the business, and we've really been in it pretty minimal amount of time to have a chance to establish a good screening and everything for everybody, so.
Did you have a chance to see these conditions for this permit?
I have not, no.
Because one of them says you can't have a commercial trash receptacle, which you have.
Right, I saw that.
And another has no stockpiling of waste, which you said the dirt was your, what your?
The dirt is my dirt, right.
For your improvements on your lot.
Right, correct.
Okay.
The only, there's no waste material there, other than, like I said, just the overage on projects, some of those.
Can you operate without having a trash receptacle there?
I can't. I mean, if there's any way that I can screen that, where only I can see it out of my back door, I would love to have a chance to do that, and whoever needs to come out and say, "Okay, you can do it." It just, it makes it easier for me. I have three kids, I fill that thing up in a week without putting my business stuff up. So I would still, if there was a way that I could make it, you know, fence it, put a gate on the front of it even, you know, whatever I would need to do, if that's a possibility.
The real...
The real issue that staff has with that, and I can understand your...
Is the truck coming and going.
It's the noise that's generated by them dumping it in a residential area. That's the biggest issue that we have.
And I understand that, too. The multi-unit family life that's going to be 70 yards from me, they're going to have one or two. The car wash that's 50 yards from me, that anybody who lives by me can hear it, I can hear it, they're going to be, you know. That's kind of what makes the property a little bit of an anomaly. I border commercial, you know, I mean, so it's kind of weird, just in that sense. Even if you remove that seven-and-a-half acre chunk that is between me and Wainwright, it's also between me and Playtime, Marquee Homes, the florist, you know, I basically am in the midst of the end of that commercial district there, so.
I can tell you the dumpster works great to get your kids out for school. I have a dumpster right next to my house, and it gets everybody out of bed right away.
Yeah, I mean, and the guy, really, that dumpster's not been there too terribly long, but we're, it's Wednesday, about 1:00 is really it. And, you know, for what I pay, if it was an issue, or if it became an issue where it was a noise thing, for what I pay, I would think I could say, "Empty it between these hours." But I mean, I don't think it is, I haven't gotten any complaints. I understand you guys don't want the complaints, so you headed off at the pass. But like I said, if there's anything I could do to screen it, great, it's a dumpster, I can get by without it. I would much rather have it, but I can get by without it.
Don't tell my kids that we can change the time the dumpster comes. I like that, that's a good way to get them up.
Approximately how many pallets of stone do you have at any given time?
It's hard to say. I mean, I could consolidate it and probably have 10 there. I probably have 20 sitting there now, because some of it's, you know, 15 square feet on this, 100 square feet on this, 12 square feet on this. But at some of the product costing me $10 a square foot, if I can save it to do an inlay in front of a fireplace, you know, it behooves me to be able to have somewhat of a boneyard. As not aesthetically pleasing as that makes it sound, it has, you know, it helps me to have a little bit of a boneyard if I can. And knowing, you know, I worked for KAV Grounds Maintenance, who's been in Pecosin for 20-some years, and he's got a great piece of property, he's lucky, you know. I've worked for other guys in the city who are, you know, are the contractors and that, and that's kind of the whole reason that I bought this house. Nobody needs 5,800 square feet. You know, I bought the house for this reason, so anything I can do, any hoops I can jump through, you know, the money I spent just to buy the house, when I don't need that, is showing that, you know, I'm willing to invest what I need to do to make it operational and smooth, you know, I'll gladly do whatever I can.
I applaud that you went to your neighbors and talked to them, that seems to solve so many problems if you just talked to them.
Well, and none of them had a problem, I don't really think. You know, like I said, the initial issue was, we moved in, and you buy something like that, and you're full bore. I mean, I'm tearing down decks, you know, anything, and it was just a big pile in the backyard that was unsightly in the middle of winter, and I think that's what kind of sparked it, sparked it, so.
Are you satisfied with the size of your company now, or do you intend for your company to grow?
When I finish the house, I'm going to put a "for sale" sign right in front of it, and if I can sell that house for what I would love to make on it, I'm going to move out anyways. But no, I mean, I want to take over the world, so.
The reason for the question was, is that, as you said right today, you might not be creating any issues for the surrounding residents.
Right.
But if you grow, you may.
If I grow, I may, I think that, and I'm all for the three-year review. I've grown from me and a lawnmower to what I am now in seven years, so not to say I couldn't more than double in three years. And I think that if it was where I had, you know, if it was that kind of a commitment, even the people that signed that and said they didn't have a problem would probably complain and go, "This isn't what we signed up for." And I'm, like I said, I'm not ignorant to the fact of what's going on there, you know. But I think, even if you guys wanted to do a two-year review, you know, I'd be up, you know, anything like that is fine with me. A whole lot bigger than I am now, I'm going to own a commercial facility anyways, and that garage would just store my car collection someday.
Seems like if you had a landscaping business, it behooves you not to make your place look nice, and...
Right. And I, I mean, it's, you know, I can't buy a house like that and not make it look nice anyways, because I only kind of hurt myself, you know.
All right, Mr. Donlap.
Thanks.
I guess we'll go ahead, and anybody else have anything they would like to come forward to the planning commission? No? All right, we'll go ahead and close this audience for this, and we'll take it under consideration. All right, concerns? You concerned about the dumpster issue? I had that checked, because that is in here, and if we did choose to pass this as is, we have to, I guess, he'll have to eliminate his dumpster.
Well, I'll just say that if you're going to have anybody who has the issue, I mean, it would be somebody who has a landscaping that can, you know, clean it up and make it look well, so I mean, seems like he's got a plan to fix it.
And the other, he's got a very good point, that the other operations around this, certainly, I'm sure they have dumpsters in close proximity, pretty close.
Certainly.
So, I mean, do we want to require, take that requirement, that if we kept it in, of course, we really want it to be, I mean, fairly, I guess, I mean, to, I mean, not sit and...
He's living on the property with his children, so, you know, I can understand it's the noise, and the residents would be concerned about the noise, but obviously, he's greasing his family there, too, so they're not going to come at 5:00 in the morning.
No.
I assume you wouldn't let them come at 5:00 in the morning?
No, I got eight months' warranty.
Yeah.
Okay, you got a big enough problem, no matter what time they come, so.
But do we, do we want to keep this in here?
I'd be fine with taking it out.
I actually think there are two questions, because the gentleman also raised the question about requirement to fence.
Right.
And right now, they're saying here, does it give any option to fencing? So I, it sounds to me like there are two issues, two questions, that, you know, either we try to resolve here, or he and the staff need to resolve and bring back, otherwise we're going to be dictating.
Well, he's got a fence up already, where he said...
Partial fence, that...
Partial fence, where he, I saw that in the photograph, when the person, one person, one landowner wanted him to leave it, take it down, not have it there, but we're requiring, of course, that he...
Requiring the entire property to be fenced.
Yeah.
I would say about that, A, the adjacent property owner that didn't want the fence didn't show up, so we don't really know what his feelings are. And B, I would like to protect not just the current adjacent property owners, but future adjacent property owners. So I would, I would like to see the fence kept in there as part of it.
I would, too.
Can I ask if you have in there evergreen, like an evergreen screen? Does that, does that count as a fence? If I do Leyland's evergreen trees, you know, to keep it natural, have a natural fence, basically, would that suffice?
For me personally, if it was dense enough, it would, I don't know what the, if there's a technical...
Most residents would rather have that than a big six or eight-foot-tall privacy fence or bright white vinyl fence.
Yeah.
I personally screen my privacy fence with Leyland cypress, but that's, and I guess that's where I'm at. As long as we're requiring screening, full screening, year-round, I think that's acceptable and preferable. I understand the property owner wishing that desire to make their property look bigger, and I...
He also has a handicapped child, that they like, instead of having a wheel up Wainwright and down With Creek, they like to access through my property, down my lane, and like to set up.
Well, that could be accommodated with a gate, if you're willing to do that. But again, I understand what you're saying, to protect future property owners that are adjacent, but this property owner would be impacted immediately by our dictating a fence be put up where he's specifically asked not to have one.
It seems like the conversation between neighbors should usurp there.
I think as long as we have a requirement for screening, that to me is the appropriate way to address that. That's my opinion.
And leave it on the...
Change out fencing for screening, in the language.
Or mutual consent of the adjacent property owners. So if there's, I like the idea that you're talking personally.
I think the gentleman raised a reasonable point.
I do, too.
We just offered screening to the previous...
Right.
...applicants.
Yeah. Okay, so, all right, clarifying this, we are going to make several changes regarding these two issues before we take this onto motion. So how do we want to, how, what are your wishes toward this?
Well, I think, frankly if I'm wrong, gentlemen, but I think what you're saying in number three, every place it says fence, we should say screening.
Right.
Okay, so let's all make note of that.
I think, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that means the guidelines that the city has in mind.
And no, not vegetative screening, screening. Because if there is a property owner who require, if fencing is what's appropriate on a property, then fencing can be done.
Right, we want it to say screening. Mm-hmm. And then on number...
He has to provide a plan, and the city has to approve the plan.
Right, exactly. And then on number six, where we are saying no commercial trash receptacle, do we want to...
I would allow...
Just eliminate?
Strike that.
Just strike it?
I think I strike the first, the first sentence, I think the second sentence, the stockpiling, you probably want to still leave it.
No stockpiling of landscaping waste or material debris shall be permitted.
But do we want them to, do we want them to screen that commercial trash?
Well, that's what we, that's what we need to, I mean...
I would say they're permitted as long as they're screened or blocked.
The whole property is supposed to be screened.
Yeah, but...
So, I mean, if the screening of the property is being done, I really don't care what it looks like from his front door. That's his business.
And again, if I might, number three requires them to submit a plan to the city to be approved, so let's, let the city take a look, who doesn't?
All right, so on number six, let's strike the first sentence and strike additionally, and just have no stockpiling of landscaping waste or material debris shall be permitted.
I think that's good.
As number six, okay, so.
Got it, got it.
All right, anything else that you wish to, before we take a motion on this?
No.
See any other areas that you would like to? Does it look okay? This, okay. All right, do we have a motion to...
I'll make a motion.
With the changes?
With the changes.
Okay, we have...
I'll second that.
Vicki?
Sure. Mr. Travis?
Aye.
Mr. Gardie?
Yes.
Mr. Avery?
Aye.
Mr. Clifton?
Aye.
Mr. Tetlow?
Aye.
And Mr. Garden?
Aye.
Chairwoman Schreiber?
Aye.
Madam Chairwoman, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Okay. All right, and the last item we have is on the new business election of officers. We put this aside the last meeting, because we didn't feel like we had proper representation to take a accurate vote, so let's go ahead.
Taxation.
All right. Also, at this time, Vicki, did you want to make a moment?
I would.
Vicki wanted to say something.
I won't keep you a moment, because I know it's getting very late, but if you've had a moment to read your memo, you realize that staff has requested the addition of an extra officer this year, and that is of deputy clerk. Many of you may not realize, but Evie Ensley in the city manager's office has been assisting me invaluabley for quite some time now, and I, she deserves that recognition. Moreover, she's more than able to fill in for me if I'm not, if I'm not present for some reason, so I'm recommending that she be added to the list of the officers. And of course, as usual, we can do that in one vote, or we can do it by nomination, whatever you see fit, Chairman.
It's fine to do it with one vote, I mean, if that's all right with y'all.
Fine by me.
Is it any problem?
Is the slate of officers willing to serve another year?
And you don't have any problem with the alteration that Vicki's presenting?
No.
I don't have a bit of problem.
I highly recommend her.
I don't think we ought to do an interview process.
I think she does an outstanding job.
She does, more than you know.
That's right, I guarantee it.
She's a senior secretary.
So with that in mind, do we want to just go ahead and, Vicki, the slate of officers, as we currently have it, I think we present it that way? Is everyone willing to...
You're doing two votes, or you're talking about...
No, I think we, wife and I, we're one.
So the current slate with the addition of the...
Are you willing to stay as wife and...
Hack another year.
Hack another year.
As long as Richard stops picking on me.
I'll storm it, but I'm sorry, I got my knee up, because I can't pick on him.
Out of the street on Saturday.
All right, so do we have a motion?
Sorry, I'll make a motion.
All right.
Mr. Garden?
Aye.
Mr. Tetlow?
Aye.
Mr. Clifton?
Aye.
Mr. Avery?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Travis?
Aye.
Chairwoman Schreiber?
Aye.
Madam Chairwoman, the motion carried by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Oh, and then with, I know, as we go down line, Vicki's got something else she wants to bring up, next meeting, the next few months, where she's going to remind us, but Debbie, have you recovered or not to make any last comments?
I don't know, now I'm into a sneezing phase, so.
Well, let's just go on. Vicki, do you have anything, Debbie?
No, I just wanted to thank the planning commission for their efforts on trying to get this flood ordinance across the finish line. You did a great job, it's been a long journey, and I appreciate all of your work on it, so thank you very much.
Appreciate your work, the planning commissions, uh, planning departments' work. Outstanding job, you, Kevin, everybody involved, Vicki, everybody helping to work on it. We all, we did that, and you worked on it. Kevin, you got any words?
I'll restate what Debbie said. What we did in such an expedited period of time, that we hope will have great impacts on this community, was very impressive. Secondly, well done on the conditional use permits. I know we bring those to you quite frequently now, but those were two of the more difficult ones to pin down, as far as negating impacts to adjacent property owners, so thank you for that. We will have another conditional use permit next month for the Metro Market piece of property. He's been doing some kind of storage art operations there for infinity, it seems, since the 70s, and we're looking to bring him into compliance with the zoning ordinance. So anyway, thank you all again, and we'll see you next month.
All right, now Vicki, what did you think?
The only thing that I wanted to bring forward was, the next meeting is October 21st, and it appears that that conditional use permit that Kevin was just speaking about is the sole item at this time? I'm looking at them for...
We can create a few more things.
But what I really wanted to bring to your mind was, according to our bar laws, if you remember, we always combine November and December meetings, so we only have one meeting, and that is on December 2nd. So I know your holiday calendars are filling up, so make sure you have that on your calendar, if you would. And that's it, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you very much for reminding us about that. It's hard to believe it's come around again, isn't it? Hard to believe. Gosh, you have anything you'd like to say?
No, ma'am, I'm excited to see development-type people actually get up here and say that they like what we did. That means maybe we did right. I hope so.
James?
Yeah, I'm impressed that such a big crowd showed up to say good things. You know, everybody came up and gave you guys attaboys for all your hard work, and that was pretty impressive, I'll have to say.
I was actually surprised there was not more speakers. We had a lot of people here, so I'm really curious what some of them were necessarily here for when they didn't speak, so, I don't know.
I think staff did a good, great job, and, you know, now Dave has something to go market and for economic development, so, you know.
Good, great.
Hey, those were, those are two tough conditional use permits, and I want to be with you the first time you go count cats.
Well, you might be, Melissa, have you done that volunteer if you retire, so you might be.
I can say, living down that way, I count them in my yard every morning, so I'm going to have to get some spray paint.
Those girls are definitely dedicated to their purpose.
Yes, they are.
They would try to recruit you.
They've almost got me ready to go sign up. I love animals. Bill?
I just want to echo what everybody else said, I do want to point out the planning
I just want to echo what everybody else said, I do want to point out the planning staff, especially on this Big Woods thing, I think you've done a really great job. This may not be the end. I mean, this may be something that has to be modified and adjusted, as we see what happens, but at least you're giving the business community and the owners a chance to see if we can't do something with it, and I think that's great. I applaud you for that. And secondly, E.V., welcome aboard, you know what they say, the reward for good work is more work.
Just what you needed to hear, right. Well, again, I'm going to say thank you on behalf of Planning Commission, because Planning Department, again, has made, I feel, made our job much simpler by what they have done, and I really appreciate it, because, I'll tell you something, if we had to start all over from scratch and do what Debbie and Kevin did, you know, to me, I just think you saved an enormous amount of time to expedite this, and hopefully, get it, get counsel, you know, get it to council, and hopefully, they'll be able to even possibly make it better than we've done. I mean, they may have some changes, we don't know, but it, I feel like, you know, I got a, we, of course, you know, you probably saw the letter that we got from one of the landowners, and I see it as an opportunity for them to maybe see some little bit of a chance at to free themselves sometimes of something that I think has become a burden to them, and, you know, we don't really want to make that any harder, if we can. So, I think we've done what we could, and to open that door and to help facilitate on our part, we've done what we could do, we've done a good job. And thank all the Planning Commission members, because I really, I enjoyed the work session we had last time, because I, I think, like Debbie said, it was an excellent work session, we had some great ideas, and I thank you for those. Other than that, I think we're...
When, when this new innovative ordinance becomes successful, I hope it doesn't cost us a planner.
Well, we hope not.
Hope not.
Keep offering them a couple of free cats.
Well, and one last thing, too, I was real sorry to hear tonight the news that Paul Fay Holloway passed away. I've known Paul Fay for, well, let's just say, Paul Fay was hired by my father when I was in high school to tutor me, because I was not, what is it, I'm right-sided, instead of left-sided brain, and Paul was a mathematical whiz, and he tutored me in geometry, which